Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's special meeting for City Council on Monday, April 7th. This is for the special budget hearing, so I'll now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Schultz?
Here.
Latta?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Hawbaker?
Here.
Gannfield?
Here.
Crisman?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now start the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2026 property tax rate for the city of Cedar Falls in motion to receive and file proof of publication.
Seconded.
Motion seconded, and all's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then we've got Staff Director Jen Rowan back for staff presentation. Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to really go through some slides we've already gone through, but mainly it's probably for the people watching that it's helpful, or people who got their letters in March, and maybe just to make sure they understand what the numbers mean on them. But we just thought maybe just take a few minutes to just kind of run through some of them, to just, again, kind of remind us where we're at. So budget process, as we all know, this starts in January. We had certain things we had to get done in February, so letters could go out in March, which was new requirement started last year under House File 718. We're in April, so this is kind of where we're at now, where I highlighted that we had to have this special meeting at a special time. That's what's required under Iowa code. And then later tonight, on the regular agenda, it's to set the hearing for the next council meeting where you actually adopt the budget. So, again, kind of a long process, but just kind of remind, this is where we're here, and then we have to have it certified with the state by April 30th. So, again, requirements is had to have the special meeting, could not have any other item on the agenda. There's no resolutions required, only a hearing on the proposed rate. And just reminder, what was in the letters, and what we originally had was a $12.50 rate, but as you know, you had a work session in the beginning of March where we made some adjustments to get down to 12.20, so we'll kind of talk about that as we go along, too. We did have to publish this, no less than 10, no more than 20 days prior to the hearing, so that was published on March 20th. Also had to be on our website and social media. We had to post it no later than when the publication was in the newspaper. And, again, this is really just an adoption hearing, and we can't set the formal hearing for the adoption until after this hearing is closed. So we have to have this hearing tonight, close it, then later tonight we'll set it, like we just talked about. So, again, these are all slides you've seen, but I think it's just good for people maybe who didn't hear the presentation before, or just kind of want to understand the letters a little better. So, again, three pieces. Works for your property taxes, your valuation of your property, the rollback, and the tax rate. Valuations, this was a year where there was no countywide revaluation, so if you had $100,000 home, it stayed $100,000. If you had $300,000, stayed $300, unless, of course, you made some improvements. But there was no countywide revaluation this year. That only occurs for odd years, and we're working on the fiscal year 26 budget, so it's an even year. County sets those, city doesn't have any control over that. Second thing is the rollback, which is set by the state, so, again, city doesn't have any control over that. Commercial property will stay at 90%, which means that, again, I have my assessed value, and what the rollback does is then only taxes it at 90%. Also, that was new for commercial. Last year was about how their first $150,000 is now taxed, like the residential rollback. So, again, sometimes when you see those increases, that's why they look a little weird, because the first $150,000 is a rollback of 47%, and then the remaining part in the commercial is taxed at 90%. So that's why that gets a little confusing sometimes. And then the state right now is backfilling that first $150,000 to us. So that's about $330,000 for the city of Cedar Falls. Second thing is, if you own a residential property, the rollback did go up from 46% last year to 47.43. And, again, same thing, if you have $100,000 home, that means you're only paying taxes on $47,000 of it. So the rollback factor alone, when it went from 46 up to 47.4, meant there was an increase of 2.3% on the residential rollback. So, I guess all the things I just said. So, the one thing that the council does have control over is the tax rate, so that's why we're here tonight. So, again, what we started at, or I should say, maybe what was the tax rate for last year, was $11.86. Originally, we had talked about a $12.50 rate, but, again, had that work session where council is proposing a $12.20. So, there were some cuts and adjustments made that night to get it down to that. So if you go from $11.86 to $12.20, so that's an increase of 34 cents, or an increase of just under 2.9%, 2.87% in the tax rate. Sometimes people are interested in knowing how we compare to other cities, so when you look at the top 20 cities in Iowa, you can see that our tax rate is the sixth lowest of the top 20, and of courses for last year, because we don't know what all the other cities are doing yet this year. So you can see even keeping it at the 12.50, 12.20 is still kind of right in the range of where we'd be at. Okay, so, again, just to make sure everybody kind of understands what happened in the letter. So, one of the things that was new this year that the state did to try to help explain things is that in the letter that went out to everybody, it assumed that everyone had a 10% increase in their assessed valuation. But you might remember, I just said a little bit ago, this was a year where there was no countywide revaluation. So, unfortunately, the letter's a little misleading, because they're telling everyone they had a 10% increase in their valuation, which isn't necessarily true. So, if you take the $12.50, which was in the letter, we would say that by when you take the $100,000 home, times the rollback, times the rate, the real percentage increase on a home would be 7.87%. You'll see the second column is what it showed in the letter, of 18.6. That's because it added that extra 10%. So, for us, again, telling the real story, you would see about an 8% increase. The letter, unfortunately, said 18. On the commercial side, same kind of thing. If you take the rollback, the proposed rate, commercial properties would see just a little over 6% increase, but, again, because of letter, saying that their 300,000 property was really 330,000, it showed a 20% increase in the letter. So, again, I think the intent was to try to show what a valuation increase could mean, but also not really the whole story for this year. So, again, those are those numbers that were in the letter. Those kind of come right off a letter where it shows those 18 and 20 percents. We also always talk about, when you kind of put all the columns side by side, residential, commercial, industrial, we like to show that, because I just mentioned about a little under 8% for residential, about a 5% for commercial, and why that is, is because of the rollback. When the rollback went up on residential, then it shifted things over to residential versus commercial, so this chart kind of shows that. Now, one of the things, again, this was at the $12.50, which was in the letter, but if you take the rate that the council was at the last time we met on the budget, down to $12.20, it means that on $100,000 home, it would be about a 5% increase, about $29 a year for $100,000. Obviously, if you have a $300,000 home, it's about $90 extra a year. And then commercial would see just under 3% actually increase. So, and, again, just reminder, to get down the $12.20, the council did, we had adjustments of about $687,000 to get down to that. Now, we know, we always like to talk about what are our challenges moving forward. We're not only talking about tonight's budget. We know the backfill continues to be phased out. I talked about the state's backfilling on that first $150,000. Will that continue in the future? House File 718, as we know, ratcheted down what we could see for growth this year. Not sure how that works hand in hand with any new property tax legislation. And then the last thing is that I added since the last time was, we do have the House Study Bill 313, Senate Study Bill 1208, talking about potential property tax legislation. I'm not sure if those bills have changed the numbers now, but, so, again, there are some things in there about proposing a 2% cap on levies, and I think why that's important is, I think we all understand, whatever we do this year, if there's a 2% cap, or 3%, whatever they come up with, what we're doing this year will impact what happens then for next year, because if they use this year for the base year to determine that 2% or 3%, then obviously that has an impact. Again, don't know what that final legislation's going to be, but we know that's just something to look forward, that we have to kind of keep an eye on to look forward for next year. Tools, we always talk about, what are some tools we've tried to do here in Cedar Falls? We try to save up for our capital projects, do some replacement funds. We save a portion of the TIF release for future economic development, still have capacity in our trust and agency levy, although not as much as we've had in the past. We've had to kind of use up some of that, and still have a very low debt rate. So, again, I didn't want to spend a lot of time going through things. Obviously, this is meant to have discussion, whether it's public or council, but just a few things, again, so this is the special hearing, kind of where we're at tonight, and then that final adoption at the next council meeting. So, for tonight, we're really going to have the public hearing right now on this proposed rate, and we'll close that hearing at the end of this. Later on tonight, we'll have the resolution to set the adoption hearing for the next council meeting. And, really, for tonight, what we're looking for is some guidance, whether to come back with that, that formal budget at the next meeting, at the, I put 11.20, I meant 12.20, sorry, it's a typo, 12.20 rate. I just saw that. And then, but if there's changes or reductions we want to make, tonight's the night we can talk about those, too, and give a staff guidance to come back with those before we actually formally adopt the budget. So with that, I'll stop, and really, questions?
Thank you, Jen. And could you go to next slide quick?
Sure, sure.
I did have something from the last council meeting. Put this up on screen, did anything that? The conversation came up about wanting to look at, over the long term, not just year by year, also what's been our overall rate of change of our total budget to the rate of inflation. So this was looking back to about fiscal year '21, which would be July of 2020 to today, including next year's proposed budget. So if you look at the change over year by year, you can kind of see what each year's change in the budget was. Two of those years that you see a decrease, we didn't actually decrease the rate, but the rates stayed at zero those years, but then just with property tax values, collections, just how those played out, that's where we ended up at. So when you see, when you look at kind of from 2021 fiscal year to this year, with what we're proposing in the next year's tax budget, our total amount of dollars collected in the budget compared to inflation, we're actually just under what the inflationary amount would have been for, if we had just stayed the baseline with inflation. So I know that was part of the conversation, was looking at what's our total impact been on the actual amount of dollars we're collecting, accounting for the property values, rollback dollars, or rollback rates, and our actual tax rate. So we've been right about that inflation mark, and I think that was part of the conversation, because during the same years was also when we had about $700,000 bill come up for the MA. That was an unplanned expense, we couldn't really do anything about that. We also had some major investments in the schools, the Unidome project that we did reduce some of the funding for this year. So we still had some pretty significant investments that we made in this time. So, one, I would say, it's a testament to the staff that we've been able to keep a pretty steady rate while still making some significant investments and managing some significant expenses that came up. With that, this is a public hearing, so we have public comments, but is there any questions from council, just for clarification right now, from Jen's presentation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Rowenbeck, for the presentation. It's really informative. My question lies, even though with this graph that we had here, I'm looking at the materials that you put together, and the residential number that I saw was 5.28% increase.
Correct. Okay.
That's not 3% that the state is, we agreed at the budget process and goal setting.
Well, what I remember from goal setting, you're right. We've had a goal of that trying to keep our increase on property taxes for residential near the CPI. That has been one of our goals. Now, I know with this last goal setting, we talked about, because I know in Ron's presentation, he talked about how the rollback alone went up 2.4%. So we knew it was going to be a challenge to be at CPI, and I think there was conversation by council about, well, is it a goal? That doesn't mean it has to be, but is that a goal? And, obviously, maybe council members have, you know, more about that, or mayor, you can, but that's what I remember, is you're right, it is one of our goals, it's been in there for a long time, it's something we shoot for, but it's also difficult, some years, to keep it at that.
The reason I bring that up, and I have conversations and emails with Danny, Mr. Mayor, and we can do that. We have capital projects budget that's got many millions in, and it's projected to grow by 3.3 million in this coming, finishing up this year, between the budget and the proposed, or, excuse me, projected. Likewise, going on into 2026, '27, '28 fiscal years, we have increases of near $1 million each year. So, from what I remember you saying, a 1% reduction in our expenses would equal about $280,000?
Correct, yep.
In CIP funding, or projects?
Or any kind of, I mean, just any kind of expenses that you would reduce.
Right.
Yep.
Well, that would be reflective on the millage rate. So, the capital project budget is growing sufficiently, and projected to grow into the future. I'm calculating about $700,000 of the projects in the CIP could be paid for with other than GO or general funds, so it would not have to...
Is this clarification, or?
See, I was waiting to see, if we're going to actually get into the meat of it, we need to wait till after the public comment. This is just right now for clarification questions on the presentation.
You were saying that 5.28 was what your slide showed for residential increase. I had a sheet here printed, 5.42, and then you made the comment it's 2.98, and I don't know where that came from, so we'll talk about that.
That was the, the 2.98 was going from $11.86 to $12.20. I was just saying that's a percent increase of 2.97.
So the increase in the millage rate?
And the increase in the millage rate is 2.97. That's what I was saying. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one, again, very good job on that report, Jennifer. You mentioned a couple of times that the state assumed there was a 10% increase of valuation.
Correct.
And so that's why we had to go with, or that's why that letter was. Is that a Blackhawk County thing, or all 99 counties? So how?
All 99 counties. So everybody in the state got that same letter. The only thing that would have changed on the letter is just what people were proposing for the rate, you know, the school, the county, the city. But otherwise, that backside where it showed $100,000 home, 10% increase, it showed the 300,000 commercial, 10% increase statewide. Everybody in the state got the same letter.
So state didn't get the message that the counties, all 99 counties, weren't doing valuation?
Well, I think...
I'm not putting you on the spot, Jennifer.
Well, but I do want to say, I think some of it did have to do with last year. You may remember last year, we were standing here talking about the complete opposite. The letter said everyone was going to get an 11% decrease, but there was increase in valuations last year, and so they were really getting a 3% or 4% increase, you know, but the letter said a negative, so I think...
And the state knew all 99 counties were doing then, too, right?
I know.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other clarifying questions for Jen right now?
General.
All right. Thank you, Director. And we'll now open it up to public comment, so anybody can have up to five minutes to speak tonight on the budget. What we'll kind of do is, if you have any specific questions, concerns, we'll try to write them all down, and then we'll come back kind of after the discussions and comments to circle back and try to answer everything that we can, so, if anybody would like to come up and speak tonight. Just name and address, please.
Craig Bearbanks, 405 Spruce Hills Drive. I'd like to talk about the millage rate, and why is that a good measure of what we're paying for taxes versus other communities? They all have different valuations. In our case, when we see valuations on our property taxes go up by 40%, that number should be going down. This doesn't mean that we're the lowest taxed place in the state by far. We're not. So can we have that explained about why that's a fair way to look at it? I watch about everything that you guys do, and my question is, is that goal setting, we ask for the moon. We do. Maybe you should reverse that and talk about revenue. How can we make it easier to increase revenue? If you want to fund all these projects, you've got to have revenue, period. And that starts with making development easier. We need to remove some of the barriers and regulations that cause housing to be so expensive. You guys are having a windfall with these huge increases in valuation. Why are we looking at a big increase? Now, I know the state puts this out, and I know that it may not be totally accurate, but it's an indication of the coal mine, the Canadian Coal Mine, is that we need to start thinking about that. We need to become a community that's more affordable. Even if we can bring people into the community who are less fortunate, they're still going to have the tax bills. That's never going to go away, ever. And we don't seem to want to put a governor on anything. I know personally, and other people, continue to email and send suggestions and have questions to the council, and you're lucky if you get one answer back, because they're passing things that I don't know that they understand, they haven't dug through the packet to understand it. Some of us just want to help, help people understand what's in there. We're going to pass more subdivision ordinances tonight. Maybe we can stop and take a look. I know we've talked, Mayor, why hasn't anything happened? I chose to come to this community 30-some years ago. I chose to come here because a city and a county who didn't have any respect for builders or developers, they just wanted to make it as hard as possible. Now I'm here, we're looking at the same thing, and we've had this conversation, Danny, Mayor, I mean, we have. Is anything going to be done? That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bearbanks. Anyone else for public, yep, just name and address, please.
Thank you. David Sturch, 1515 Blackhawk Street in Waterloo. I'm here to talk on behalf of Matt Transit, and I just want to be here to thank the mayor and council staff for this process that you do every winter, spring, so to speak, with the budgets. And Matt gets their operating funds from federal and state grants, along with the transit levies through the local jurisdictions. And, you know, over the years, we've asked for a modest 3% increase, and that helps cover insurance and wages and whatnot, and I just want to just lay it out, appreciate all your work you guys do, and help fund the transit authority in the area. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sturch. Anyone else for public comment tonight? Just name and address, please.
Pam Gabber, 2822 Neola Street. I know all this was considered when we were living in normal times, but we're not living in a normal time right now. We're living in uncertainties. We don't know what's going to happen Thursday, Friday, Saturday, it's crazy. So I don't know how you can go on a budget right now and increase taxes on people. We have no idea what's going to happen. It's crazy. It's extremely irresponsible and demonstrates a significant lack of concern for residents to raise property taxes right now. We have absolutely no idea of what's going to happen. We're going to have people that are going to be losing their homes. You just need to reconsider and think that this was, might have been a good plan last year, but right now, it's not. It's, I don't know what else to say, but if you're seeing what I'm seeing, it's not good, and it doesn't look like it's going to get any better in the future. So please reconsider, and we don't have affordable housing here, we don't have decent employment. We need to focus on things like that to get Cedar Falls built back up. Maybe the idea of going through with things is, maybe people are going to be losing their homes... losing their homes, and there might be a lot of affordable housing then. I just think it's really sad, and please reconsider. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Todd Graebur, 1210 First Street, and here in Cedar Falls. Been here since 2009. I agree with a lot of the stuff that this council has done over the years, but over the last few years, it seems that, I don't know if it's just out of focus, or if there's, if there's a communication issue or what, but I'm basically gonna say, as it's been said to me quite a few times, when people say, oh, you live in Cedar Falls, how can you afford it? And I say, well, I don't know. If we can, we're gonna, might have to move eventually because we just can't. But the biggest thing they always tell me is, well, I can say that, at least on several different occasions, they said, wow, you live in Little Detroit, where people can't live there, but jobs are there, so they have to travel 30-plus miles to get there to have their job, but they can't live there because they can't afford it. And that's all I'm gonna say about this, because that's what I see not only from friends, but also from coworkers, especially with the more recent layoffs of bigger companies around here, and people just can't afford it. So now Cedar Falls has the little nickname of Little Detroit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment tonight?
I've never been here before.
Just please come up to the mic, so just so everyone online can hear it. So just name and address, please.
My name is Dean Dunphy. I live in the 3rd Ward. Darrell Cruz here is representative. And I've never been here before to one of these meetings. I'm retired now, and I got a little bit more free time on my hands. Got married when my wife and I are both in our 70s and kind of starting a new chapter to our, our life. And I've, we sold the house we was in, and a couple of them actually, and bought something different. This is the first I've ever lived in Cedar Falls, almost five years ago now, when I moved here. And I gotta tell you that recently, in talking about taxes, that this picture popped up in my mind about losing my house because the cost of living is going higher than my Hannah, do you own a home?
Please keep the comments. To me, Mr. Dunphy.
Isaac, how about you?
Mr. Dunphy, please. Mr. Dunphy, I'll have to cut you off. You have to keep the comments directed up here, please.
Okay. You own your home, I'd bet on it.
Yep.
Are you happy with watching things go up just a little bit by little bit by little bit constantly, year after year after year? Don't, don't you think that, you know, with normal cycles, that you'd see a little up, a little down, a little up, a little down? Are you happy with the increased cost of living in your own home? Do you live in Waterloo or Cedar Falls?
Cedar Falls, probably.
That was kind of.
Legally, I have to.
Official question, but I'm here because I'm seriously concerned about our ability to continue to live in Cedar Falls because of the high cost of living. That's why I'm here. I put time aside, my life, my wife, to come in here and, and express these concerns to you folks. You're who we're given. You all are who we are given to bring these issues to when there's issues that we're not happy with. And I gotta tell you, I know that you can't do something about everything, but I'm also not so naive as to think that you can't do some things. Are we doing everything that we should ought to be doing to try? I mean, technology is, is taking us places we never imagined, especially in my lifetime. I was born in '48, just turned 77. I've seen a lot of changes, believe me. Many, many changes. But with the technology that we've got here today, shouldn't we be able to get more of a, a chart pattern that would show a little up, a little down, a little up, a little down, instead of just constantly getting more expensive every year, year after year, and developing a program that we explain to the people that live in our wards? You know, we just develop a program and say, oh, well, yeah, this looks really bad, so let's develop this assessed value. What I care about is not what the assessed value is, but about how much money is being taken out of my pocket, what it's costing me to live here. And that concern would be whether I was in Cedar Falls, Iowa, or in Timbuktu, you know? In comparison to some states, why, I suppose that's not nearly so much as what it costs others. We have, okay, thank you. We, we have different economic systems depending on where we live across the country. But I'm not happy with the job that you're doing if you think that letting it go up a little bit by a little bit, year after year after year. I expect to see you bring down a cost. That's what I expect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dunphy. Anyone else for public comment this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will now close the public hearing, and I will just quickly kind of work through some of these questions here. One, I know there was a question on the millage rate versus other measures. The tax rate, correct, is not the single rate to use. It does impact depending on the property values. Cedar Falls does have a high property value on average. We're one of the higher ones in the state. We're about $252,000 median home value. And affordability in Cedar Falls has always been a big conversation. I know we've talked a lot about it for the last year that we've been around, and a lot of of you that have been here longer than before that. And so there are a lot of efforts going on around some of the new incentives to incentivize new housing. There is, as we've talked about, Mr. Fairbanks, hasn't come yet, but Development Task Force that we're working on right now, the timeline forward to review, what is it that about Cedar Falls is maybe difficult to develop in, maybe some changes we can make to the process, what's working well? And that'll be something we're working on this year. One of the measures I know we do look at to kind of balance that is there's the property tax rate, but there's also our taxes per capita. So just for each of us, what's the average we each pay? And Cedar Falls on that, one, two, three, four, five, is also the fifth lowest. We're about $629 per person. The average is about $749 per person. So I will say, just as I've had a year to dig in on this and work with council staff, as a city, we are very well-run. We've, for decades, been a very fiscally conservative community. If you've seen some of the news lately, you're seeing other communities having to make drastic cuts, not open pools, shut down services. As a city, we've been able to fortunately maintain the services we have, the facilities we have. We have some amazing reserves that we put in place to make sure we're always able to accommodate. And I think the goal has always been to give taxpayers a predictable increase over the years so that you're able to budget for that. The whole topic about being on the fixed income and where property taxes, property values are at right now is a very difficult conversation. I know one that the state is looking to address with some of their new house files to try and help limit some of the increases on those on fixed incomes. So hopefully more to come there. Increasing revenue is something I know we've talked a lot about. Tax, the property tax levy rate is not the only tool we have. There's also a lot of the other amenities people pay for. We'll be talking tonight about, you know, curbside recycling. How much would people like to pay for that versus how much tax money it would take to subsidize a service like that? So that is something I know we've talked a lot about of, we need to incentivize some new development. People moving to town, new development's happening, brings in new tax base. We are a very residential-heavy city. We are 74% residential. The state average is more in the mid-60s. So it does mean our tax burden falls more on our residents than it does on some of the commercial. So we do have a lower per person, but it also means more of the burden of our overall tax amount is on our residents. So that's why one of our big goals, and going forward, our goal-setting strategic planning this year is how do we incentivize more commercial, industrial, to try and help balance that out. The increase part is just a difficult conversation. I showed that kind of chart about inflation. Inflation has just been high the last couple of years. So even if we're just keeping up with inflation, that still feels like it's going up a lot. And I know that's a big part of the conversation we've been having is, if you look back, I believe it's 20, fiscal year 24, actually have it in front of me, fiscal year 24 and 22, I believe those years, the tax rate was left at 0% increase because it was COVID, trying to give some adjustments and give people some, some breathing room during those years. However, we didn't necessarily cut the budget much in those periods. We more so dipped into our savings to pay for some things to buy down the rate. And so we're coming to a point where we've been in discussion of, okay, we need to either look at some of those cuts to services, or we need to right-size the budget, because we've really been dipping into our savings to do some of that over the last couple of years. So that is a big part of, I think, our conversation now is what's that service level we want to maintain versus the tax rate that people can absorb? I'm trying to see if I missed anything here. We do live in uncertain times. We live in very uncertain times. So I know that's not lost in the council and something I think we'll have more conversation on. So but I think, just again to the affordability piece, I know that's a continuing, ongoing conversation with a lot of us. It's been my personal feeling that if you expect someone to work in your communities, you should be able to expect them to afford to live in your community. And right now, Cedar Falls is a very high-demand place to live in. I was just talking to some realtors the other day, and housing, anything under $400,000 is still going off the market. My neighbor's house, about $263,000, sold in five hours. And so we're still seeing a lot of demand, but again, a lot of the prices, supply and demand, keep going up. So property values go up, so property taxes go up. And I know, thankfully, we're trying to get some more reliability with the state on the rollback and the property valuations. But it's been an interesting couple of years, to say the least, on all the changes going on with some of the state, how property values and inflation's affecting all that. So with that, I'll kind of open it up to council for any discussion,
I'd have another question for, for Jennifer. Well, it'd be more of an ask, Jennifer. Could you, could you look into your crystal ball and at the 2%, if there would be a 2% cap from the state, how would that play out?
Well, if it's just on the general levy, what I was doing earlier today is I took the 2% times our general levy, and I thought a 2% increase is $360,000 or, or somewhere in that range. So, but let's keep in mind, that wouldn't even cover what our salary increases probably. I mean, $300,000 sounds like a lot on a, you know, on our tax levy, but that probably wouldn't even cover just our basic salary increases next year. So we understand that. I think what's hard about those caps, those hard caps, is I think what everyone's worried about is that, we all know there's lots of expenses we have that have grown more than 2%. And I think the fact that, that's just, you know, where's the 2% based on? I mean, is it arbitrary number? I mean, I know there's been conversation about, should the increase really be tied to like the Midwest Consumer Price Index? Does that make more sense? So I, I think that's what concerns us about the 2%, is we know that there's a lot of things that are increasing by more than the 2%.
So if we would go to your 1120 that you were, you threw out there?
I, I meant 1220, because I.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought you said 11.
We can get there, though.
That would be, that would be it. We could only go up 20, 2% next year.
Our levy dollars. Now, now, if the rollback would go up on residential, although they've been talking about eliminating, you know, rollback and how that works, but let's just say if it's under our same parameters right now, if the rollback goes up, then we could decrease the rate and still collect the same amount. You know what I mean? So, so I think sometimes that's what's hard when we talk about the millage rate and the tax rate. Does it go up? Does it go down? It's hard when you have those other factors in there, too. Well, is the rollback gonna go up and down? How much value weight, you know, are people gonna see in their increased valuation? Is it gonna be 3%, 18%, 1%? You know, so that's, it's hard when you have those other factors there, too, that you have to take into account.
One other thing I wanted to clarify, when you say the increase of wages and benefits, not all, but many of those are contracted and negotiated, right?
Right. Union contracts, yeah.
We have a contract that we are required to, to meet.
Right. So I think right now, we're in the middle of union contracts of both our Public Safety and Public Works that go through 2027, is what we're in right now. We're working on the 26 budget. Those go through 27.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I guess I'll kind of pick up where I left off here. The, I'll call it the bragging piece that we have here, which somebody can zoom in on this, and it shows the valuation that we pay, or excuse me, the tax rate we pay compared to about 20 other cities in the state, and we're the fifth one or so. But we are also, as documented at our strategic plan meeting, we're about $100,000 higher in home values than the rest of Blackhawk County. So we're in the immediate vicinity of us, we're $100,000 more. Is our city, are the homes in Cedar Falls that much more valuable? Apparently so, but because of the costs of developing neighborhoods and, and infrastructure to put in and build homes. I had three calls on, not the letter that was mandated on the tax rate, it was the valuations for the next year.
Right. Yep.
And, and I looked at mine after I heard about this, and I saw that a couple of my properties went down $1,000. I'm like, gee, thanks. But the lot went up about 30 or 40%. Right? There's heads nodding out there. So why is that? To the point that one speaker said, the cost to develop a lot before you build the house on it has gone up dramatically. You drive around the state, you drive around the neighboring communities, we have lots starting at $125,000 before you build anything. You can go in neighboring communities and buy them for $50,000. There's a big problem there. And I've said this to Mr. Gaines, and I've said this to other people, we got these upfront costs to, to, to start digging dirt, and it's reflected now in these property taxes. Okay? That's one point that I want to drive home, because this bragged graph here, to me, is worthless. It really isn't the full picture by any means at all. It needs to be big footnotes. If, if I gave this to a client, I'd have to have three pages of footnotes on here to explain where these numbers came from. And if you ever get a mutual fund prospectus in the mail, how many pages is that? Anyway, that's a side note. But as I said earlier, our capital projects fund, it's summarized, and people can look this up, it's in the packet, 6-20 is the page, that it shows the budgeted 2025 capital project ending balance should be $26 million and something, and change. The projected is 29.4. So it's growing by 3.3, and we're getting close to the end of fiscal '25. So to me, as a budgeting person, when I consult my clients, I would say, you can take some of your extra money as projected here, and I'm assuming this is pretty accurate because we're a few months away from the end of '25, and take some of that and pay for some of the CIP projects, and it won't hurt a thing. The next year, fiscal '26, '27, '28, each of these are growing by close to $1 million. So we're projecting increases, and as one speaker says, we don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, the market down, the NASDAQ is down over close to 20%, and some individual stocks way more than that. We have uncertain times like you wouldn't believe. To the valuations, or excuse me, the rollback.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt.
Is this the?
I think if you're, if you're proposing something, you should propose it. What should we cut?
I'm making my point, and I'm reiterating what the public tells me, and I'm assuming they're calling you as well. So the rollback is mandated by law to allow statewide residential taxable values to not grow more than 3%. Okay? So when we say we don't know, we're, we're bouncing, juggling balls in the air, we're playing the three-ball game, or the three-cup game with the ball hidden, we know the valuations, excuse me, the rollback will limit the valuation increase by 3%. We don't have to go up by 3%. We can be frugal, just like I said, take some of the surplus from capital. We can be frugal, just like I said, take some of the surplus from capital projects, other sources. We don't have to do everything in the CIP. It's needs versus wants. We want a lot. We've got a great city because of it in the years past, but we need to cut, or we need to keep it to zero, to points that are made by all the speakers. If all of you are my client, the city is my client, which they are as a councillor, we have to cut the rate that the citizens are getting charged. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. If, could quick Jen go through?
Yep.
One, the property valuation piece, again, that's why I referred to the taxes per person because that's, you're right, that's not the single best measure or a great measure. It's a measure, but there's others to look at, the impact per person. The valuations piece, I would say it's valuation of a lot really is what someone will pay for it. Ultimately, when those valuations are being done, they're adjusted to keep them within the 100% range of what things are actually selling for. So again, if we have a high-demand city, I think we're seeing some of that. It's causing some of those higher prices, and people have been willing to pay for them. But Jen, could you, on the capital projects piece, just talk to, because I know that account is kind of a, a lot of the TIF monies roll through there, just because that account increases doesn't mean those are just free monies that we have available. There's a lot of money that goes in and out of those for projects throughout the year.
Correct. So councillor Person Cruz mentioned 6-20. On 6-18, a couple of pages right before that, it'll also show our TIF fund has a negative 32 million. In other words, we're cash-flowing a lot of those TIF and economic development projects out of our capital projects. So you have to keep that in mind, that if there's, we're using those dollars to cash-flow other things. So if you net those, you know, we have to keep that in mind. The other thing is, is on the CIP, Mr. Cruz is right, there's lots of things on here that people wanted for projects, and so you'll see that I think it's a little over 4 million is out of capital projects funds, that we have projects on there for that. We also threw that fund, you mentioned there's various things that go through there. One of the things is also, if you look at the top of that, you'll see kind of different fund numbers. Well, one of those things is also our FEMA money, so when we do flood buyouts and a lot of that, and as a lot of you who have been on the council, in our goals, we talk about our emergency reserve, that we're wanting to keep that around 2 million. So that's part of that as well. You also see on the CIP, there's the cell tower lease income, which we're actually going to talk about tonight in the council meeting, that we're designating projects on the CIP, that that cell tower lease income comes through capital projects, but then we've designated those on the CIP for various parks projects. So I think it's hard to just take one number, that's why I just want to explain that, but you're right. I mean, you're absolutely right, councillor Person Cruz, that that is what we have sitting in capital projects. So you're right. Council could decide, as we go through the CIP process, to use those in a different way. The problem is, you have to remember then, what are we going to use to cash-flow our TIF projects? Because as you can see, we have a large negative on that. The other thing I just wanted to point out also is, I think councillor Person Cruz is exactly right about the tax rate. It's hard to just talk about the tax rate. And like you said, we talk about that and how we compare to other cities. I think people do talk about a benchmark. That's why we include it, because people tend to ask, well, how do we compare to other cities? How do we compare to other cities? And just on the flip side, there's ones on the chart where their valuations might be lower than us, but you're right, that's why they have a much higher tax rate than we do. I mean, they might have a tax rate that's several dollars higher than ours because their average valuation is lower. I think that's also, too, why we like to, when I talked about earlier in our presentation about what the real story is, you know, we're not sitting here saying we're only increasing, taxes are only going to increase 3% or 2.8% or whatever head about what the rate went up. No, we're trying to tell the real story, that there's rollback increases and all that, so the increase is 5%. Because on the flip side, as everyone knows, there's been years, we could have said that our taxes are going down, just like last year. We could have said our taxes are going down, but we're telling the real story, that they're not, because you've got to take the rollback, you've got to take the increase in the assessed value, and we were trying to tell that real story. So I just, I think that's why we've always tried to show them that, because Mr. Cruz is right, that it is, it's just one piece. And so you have to kind of take them all together to figure out what's the true impact on someone's property taxes. So I think that's what I had. Did I answer all your questions, or no? You got more?
Well, before we go to that, we'll keep going around some others, get a chance to speak. But we can, again, addressing the CIP items, that is part of the discussion. That was what we had the last meeting for, was to go through in-depth all the CIP items and discuss items people would like to cut, to remove, suggestions that they'd like to make. And then the intent today was to bring forward, based on those discussions and conversations, what the budget we'd like to look at. We do still have the ability tonight to look at if there's changes we'd like to make. So that's part of the discussion, if there's specific items anyone would like to recommend, we move for the budget, make changes. We can do that, because the intent would be, then the next meeting is, we're there to vote the final budget and make sure we get it approved for our state deadlines, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Just a few things. So first, Jen, I just want to make sure folks, I may ask you to repeat something, just because I don't know that, I feel like it's good to repeat it. So although our valuations have gone up, and I know it's a more complicated answer, but if we could have something very simple for me and anyone else that might need it, our valuations have gone up, but the way we capture the money generated from that has significantly changed. I mean, I've been on council since 2020, the heat of COVID, and it's continued to change, and not in a good way. It is dependent on how you look at it. Could you simplify that? Like, how has that changed? Why, when my house goes up in value, because I think many of us, none of us, as far as I know, are living way high on the hog, so we're all very much, very much sympathetic to everyone's concerns, but tell me as a taxpayer, as a homeowner, why we're not capturing as much money?
Sure. Well, I think two reasons. One is, and a lot of this is probably more about last year's presentation, and I say that because last year, you may recall, we were all sitting here, and a lot of people knew that their valuations were going up 20%. And we saw that. Whether your residence or commercial, values were going up 20%. I mean, that's what was the average for us. But you may recall last year, the residential rollback went down the most it has gone down since rollback started, I think, in whatever it was, 80s or whatever. So to offset, which is kind of what Mr. Cruz was talking about, you know, that is their point of rollback. If they knew valuations were going up 20% last year, I think the rollback went down like 16% or 17%, which is kind of what Mr. Cruz is talking. So that helps offset for residential homes, when the value goes up, but the rollback goes way down, that has an offsetting effect before you even chart or, you know, apply the rate to it. So that's one thing. I thought maybe the other thing you were talking about is with House File 718 last year, the other thing that happened is, we could have seen 4% growth in valuations, but because of House File 718, we only got to see 2%. The ratchet-down factor, so that they always talk about, is because we had over 4%, we could only capture 2% in there. And that's one of my things that I'm still trying to figure out, is how House File 718 continues and that ratcheting down, how does that work with any new property tax legislation they're talking about? I'm not, I'm not really sure. But if we're, if everything stays the same, we know next year, there's going to be, you know, depending on our growth, could be more ratcheting down that we have to do. So that's probably the two things. I don't know if that helped. I don't know if that was easy or simple, but is that the two you were thinking of?
No, no, I appreciate that. I also would like to maybe add on to that, and maybe this is covered in it, but just for folks, House File 718 also took away our library levy and our band levy in the city of Cedar Falls. So Jen, about how much was that for the library levy that we've?
Sure. So between the two was about 600,000. Most of that is the library levy. 35,000 was for the band, so right around that 565,000 was for the library levy that we lost last year.
Thank you. And oftentimes I hear, I think most of us will agree, increased tax is not, is not something any of us strive to have, but I always remember what councilman Harding used to say, okay, you tell me what service you'd like to lose. Would you like no police? Would you like no fire? Would you like a library that's not open? Would you like sewers that aren't maintained? What else could we lose on our, on our general fund there?
Well, if you look at.
Pretty much anything with staff.
Sure.
Jen doing all the staff that does everything?
Right. We always talk about, like, we have that pie chart in our budget that shows for our general fund levy, what are the main services it goes to, and it's, it's easy. It's police, fire, parks, and library. Those are the four biggest ones that our general fund does fund. So I think you're right. If when that's lowered, or there's more constraints on that, those are the things that, the services that would be impacted.
Thank you. So I hear, what I hear from folks is, I've, one woman said it nice, she said, look, I'm on a fixed income, I don't, you know, paying higher in taxes is not something I wish to do, but I also appreciate the services I have. And specifically, she was talking about the library. She does not want cuts to her library. She does not want the library to be closed at certain times of day or not open on certain days. So I just, you know, and we certainly all hear you, this is not something, this is not an easy conversation. This is a conversation that started, really, goal-setting was in, what, it was in December?
Yeah.
We met for what, 12, 16 hours? And then we've had hours, I mean, this is not, this is not an easy process, and it certainly isn't an easy process. When we talk about what's going on in the world and uncertain times, and I don't mean to make this sound snotty, but if you think that what happens nationally and what happens certainly in the state of Iowa doesn't trickle down and affect the state, I mean, we still need to provide services, and it's becoming very difficult. And it certainly is uncertain. We don't even know if, every year, it's a different thing. You know, the 2% thing, the fact that that wouldn't even cover our staff, and for me, that's, you know, when all this is going on, when I have to like get in my head and calm myself down and focus, my biggest focus is our staff. We have a very lean staff who does a very good job, and I'm incredibly proud of them. And when we talk about people not being able to afford and to live in the city that they work in, I very much think of those folks. So I just, you know, I always, I'm very passionate about the work that our staff does. I'm passionate about the work that we do as a body, and all these things were talked about. The CIP, I just want to also point out that we did pull back stuff from that last meeting. We pulled back $1 million from a pledge to the University of Northern Iowa for the unidome renovation. That was, when we talk about compromising, for me, that was a big compromise. I very much back that project and the collaboration between the city and the unidome, which is, I think, an iconic piece of Cedar Falls that brings, you know, a great return on investment. But when you have to get down and dirty, that was what we did. So I guess, yeah, I'm just, I just want you to know, we very much do think of it. We are you. We are citizens elected to serve you. We have parents, we have children, we know, but we're trying our best. And services, again, if you want to cut some services, let me know, and we can try to start cutting.
Thank you, councillor. Other discussion thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
One sec, I was just going to see if anyone that hasn't spoken yet wants to jump in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I just wanted to say thank you to our finance team and to our staff, our directors. It takes a lot of work to put this together, and obviously, this isn't our final vote on this, but it's our grand presentation again, and so thank you, Jen. I've really learned a lot every time. There's a lot of different terms, there's a lot of information in here, and so thank you to the experts for putting this together for us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Cruz?
Sure, thank you. I can appreciate councillor Dunn that you're talking about the services and what it costs to provide police, fire, and so on, but I'm looking at a CIP budget program that has 214 items for 73,347,000 and change. These are projects, not services. Many of the services of the city are paid with enterprise funds, garbage, recycling, so on and so on. So we pay for those separately, and we'll have a presentation on that shortly. So I'm looking at the projects that are proposed, and I'm looking at a surplus, even netting of TIF and so on, as presented in our financial guide here, what do we call this thing? Preliminary financial plan 2026, 2028. And again, I go back to the surplus in the capital projects. We can squeeze out $700,000, and I'm still kind of baffled. Let's, Jen, can you go back and what you were saying in one of the charts, 5.28% increase versus, then you said 2.98?
Sure. So if you take just our rate, just, just the millage rate, if we're going up from 1186 to 1220, not, Gil's 1120, like he thought I had, but 1220, that is, if you take 34 cents, how much I went up, over 1186, I get 2.87%. That the millage rate increased, okay? Now, it's easy really to come up with why a residential home is seeing a 5.28 or whatever the rounding is. It's because the rollback went up from 46 to 47, which is also a 2.4%. So when you take the rollback of 2.4, you take the, the increase in the tax rate of 2.8, that's where you get your increase of 5.2. That's where that's coming from. And there's no, we did not put in ours about an increase in valuation because it's not a revaluation year. So that's why this year, it's kind of easier to explain, because it's really only two things that are affecting it. Where last year, we had three things, because everyone's valuations went up. Does that make, does that help?
Okay. That brings me to another point, and we've talked about this when we debated, the very first item in our council goals, limit tax increases to no more than the rate of inflation in residential properties for controllable costs. So the properties went up by 3%, there's the inflation rate. We should keep our millage rate the same and not move up at all, because we're giving, we're in the formula, valuation times the millage rate, and then you got the rollback on the valuations, and the state is capping that at 3% by law. So we have to pull back ourselves, and I am sure that there are some projects in here that we could say, instead of general revenue, which will be affected on the millage, with the, with the actual capital dollars that we could get, and we could use the capital project fund. There is plenty of money in there to cover 700,000. We could go lower. I mean, we need to do that, given what's happening in the economy, in the world, you know, the conflict in Ukraine, mandates coming down, all sorts of things. We have to tighten our belt, use the money that we have there. We have all of our emergency monies stockpiled and then some. We debate that at goal-setting. There's not a problem there. Oh, one other point I wanted to make. Mr. Mayor, you were talking about the per capita, was that cost or revenue? What was the?
Yeah, it's the total taxes collected per person.
Per person. I would postulate that if you're counting college kids that don't own land, that's going to water down the number in the calculation. If you actually took the population of Cedar Falls and took out the college students that don't contribute property tax money, that number would go up, and it would be much more than what they're showing there. But I could be wrong. And I've been wrong before, but not very often, but.
For the sake of conversation, do you have, because again, we can discuss cutting things, but are you making a motion?
I'd like to see staff come up with $700,000 of general revenue expenses in the CIP be financed with capital projects. Let them decide, since they're the people that know this really well, which projects could be financed differently. To give relief to the people that spoke here and other people that, I am sure, there's many at home, I've got calls, it's not that difficult. I took 700,000 divided by the 74 million that the total CIP is, and I had 0.8. Let's see, 0.08, it's a fraction of a percent. So I think it can be done.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
A motion, looking for a second.
A second, the discussions are, I think that there's merit in looking at this, I think in the goal-setting and in our CIP, we talk about them as a goal to shoot for. Some have said it's a nice wish list. You know, I do think that when it comes down to where the rubber meets the road is when we need to have these tough conversations, and sometimes we hear that that means we're going back and rehashing things that we've already decided. That negates the point of it being a goal that we might target. So earlier discussions, it was said that this isn't the final decision, and then when we talk about it at budget. And then when we talk about it at budget, we're derided for saying going back and rehashing. It can't be both. I do think that there is some value there in saying, hey, this is a target to shoot for. When I've asked for reductions in the past, it is very much to Councilmember Dunn's point, what services and/or staff do we want to eliminate? I'm a little bit trepidatious of going down that road, but to see where we have some alternative funding methods that we could get through some painful years would be great. I remember back to, you know, paying $30 million for a Main Street reconstruction that we didn't pull back on and nobody knew whether the cost was going to continue to go up or to go down, but a lot of our estimates right now are coming in and we're getting bids lower. I think, you know, costs are going to be so uncertain and volatile, it behooves us to look at that budget and find out whether we could pay for some of these projects with alternative funding. I'm not the expert, so I would trust our staff to be able to come up with those. I think a couple of them come to mind for me that there was a little bit of flexibility in some of these uncertain projects around the Hearst and a couple of the items that we might be able to have some flex towards. Again, I don't have all the answers on those, but I was happy as well with the 1220. I mean, we visited, 1250 was the initial highest rate possible if we could have everything that we wanted and eat it too. And when we said, "Let's come down to 1225," I thought, "That's a, that's a middle ground compromise." And yet, since those conversations have happened, times are much more tumultuous. So 1220, while better than what I asked for, I still think if there's a possibility that we can curb that a little bit more, it would be worth looking at. I don't know if we're alone in that sentiment, but I, I agree, this is a hard job. We've got a lot of things that Cedar Falls is fantastic because of the services that we provide and at a low rate, might come back to the end of the day and say, "No, we're going to keep it as is." But I think we could look at it and see if there's a way to keep it from increasing. And there's a trend line with our taxes that keep going up and up to some of the speaker's points and we need to curb that a little bit because costs everywhere are going up for everybody. Our millage rate even staying the same means their out-of-pocket tax payment goes up simply because of inflation and valuation adjustments. So it's making it much more untenable to stay in Cedar Falls for some people. And I, I don't care if somebody's making a, a home sale at $450,000 in five hours if the people that live here and made this city great can't afford to stay here.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, one clarifying point, if I may?
Yeah.
People bring in, council members are saying services. I'm not looking at cutting services to save money, I'm looking at cutting projects or pay for projects differently. That's a significant difference, a very big difference. I'll give one right off the front page of the CIP, Capital Improvement Program, for the public not knowing what CIP is, but conference room chair replacement, $6,500 from general revenue. Could we pay that with capital project money? $6,500. You want to go item by item? I mean, it would be up to staff to come up with things around 700,000 that could be taken out of the general revenue bucket of money and pay for it with capital projects there by lowering the millage rate for the citizens.
Couple of things I'd say to that. One, I would say it does lower the millage rate this year, but we're not actually saving taxpayer monies if we just use our savings to pay for stuff today because then we just don't have that money to pay for stuff tomorrow. So yes, we can use reserves, but I would caution, just looking back over the last five years, we did keep the rate at 0% in a few years, but we did not really reduce the budget in those years. We pulled from savings and eventually, you keep that up, you run out of savings. So I would caution continuing to go down this path of just pulling from reserves to continue to pay down projects because eventually, we will have no reserves. Because the capital projects fund, it may look like it's growing, but in terms of the unencumbered money that we actually have to put toward projects, that portion of it is just based on general fund savings if we have some at the end of the year, which thankfully, we're much fuller staff now. We've gotten a lot of our positions filled. We've actually had some really good employee retention this year. So we're not going to have much in that account to really feed into that that we have had in the past. So one, we can't really depend on that like we have in the past. So I would say we can do that. I would just caution, it's not good budgeting to continue to use your personal savings to pay for projects because eventually, we won't have personal savings. Not saying we don't have some savings and that's a choice, we do have that option. But I would just say, that's kind of been over the last five years, we've done a good job keeping that rate down because we pulled from reserves. But eventually, we've got to either genuinely cut the budget and cut projects and potentially services or stop dipping into the reserves.
We're not dipping into services.
Again, that's, I'm just saying long-term, if we keep using some of our reserves.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? I want to rebuttal him, but then, go ahead. Well, eventually, yeah, I'm assuming. But, you know, and then to, to continue your point, I mean, ultimately, I, I am incredibly proud and fascinated by how well-positioned our city is budget-wise. And the reason is because of that balance between knowing that we need to keep those savings and maintain some discipline. Because if we're not using that money in the correct way, ultimately, if we want to have those things in the city, we have to borrow for it. And that's more expensive. And that's why we can keep that millage rate lower. I understand the interplay between that and the valuation, but it's because we don't have to borrow so much. And if we start, if we start down that road of depleting the, the savings and the reserves, we will be in that position where we have to be borrowing a lot and we'll never be able to dig our way out. The fact of the matter is, I understand what everybody says, everybody feels the same inflationary pressures. We all have them. The city has them as well. And when we're talking about the general revenues that are collected, I think just north of 27 million, Ms. Rodenbeck, if I'm wrong, we have a lot of other sources of money, but we really see that one is pretty much covering police and fire and other services and it doesn't even cover all that, correct?
Right, because we levy for the benefits on a lot of those employees. I think that's what you're getting at, outside of our general levy.
Outside of the general levy. So, and, and it's not so easy just to say that money that we have earmarked or other funding sources could simply reduce our, our demand or need for those general revenue funds, right, or the millage rate, right? I think that's what you're getting at, is it gets complicated when you look at the CIP and the different funding sources.
Sure.
Okay, all right. There's a motion on the floor and frankly, I'm, I'm not sure what it was. I think it is wrong to say to the staff, "Just generally reduce it." If a council member, which is why we're here, has a specific cut they want to get rid of, then name it and we'll discuss it. So I will not be in favor of that motion. If somebody wants to say what lines they want to cut and make their explanation for it, we can have separate votes.
Mr. Mayor, may I, can we call the question? May I call the question on this motion that's on the table so we can yea or nay that?
So we have to call the question? So all those in favor of calling the question on the motion? I'll just clarify on the motion to have staff look at reviewing $700,000 in potential cuts to bring back for review. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay. Nay, I mean.
And so is that, is that four or three? And then just to check really quick, do we need super majority on that or is it majority? So call the question does not pass, so still open discussion for the motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, may I counterpoint to you?
Kristen, we'll come back to you.
I, I tend to agree with Councilmember Hawbaker that I, I think if we're looking at specific cuts, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know that I feel great about putting that onus on staff. I think that needs to come from this body and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you requested that two weeks ago when we, when we did meet. And so I, I personally, at the time, I'm, I'm happy with the rate that you had, you and we have proposed. And I don't know that I've seen, at least delivered my direction, perhaps to yours, any specific cuts proposed within that two weeks. So we can certainly continue the conversation, but I think now, rather than saying, generally, we would like to see this number cut, I think we're at a spot now where the rubber meets the road and we need to say, these are the specific, the specific line items that need to be cut. And so I guess from my end, when this comes down to a vote, since we are going to ultimately vote on this motion, since the call to question did not pass, my vote on this is going to be no because I do think it, the recommendation needs to come from us. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. And just to clarify quick, just so those in the audience know too, that was the process. We did meet with everybody, remember, one-on-one with staff to kind of talk through, we set that max budget based on goal setting, everything everyone kind of asked for and it was kind of the full wish list, if we did everything everyone wanted. And then met with all the council members and we brought forward essentially a proposed list of, here's what, based on our conversations with everybody, we think is a more realistic budget. And here are options that we can take out, leave in, based on reviewing it with staff on which things we think we could cut, maybe postpone, pay for through other funding services. And then that, we brought back to the last work session as the 1220 amount with a list of items that we could still cut if people would like to. Then we voted on that to say, okay, is this a comfortable number everyone would like to move forward with? And then I believe we had a six one vote on, yeah, to move forward. And then that was the next goal is, okay, if there's anything else, throw it out there. But really, the intent was to have a lot of this feedback from council at this point for what general areas, what type of things would we like to cut? So I think myself, staff have been very open to wanting to review based on where this body would like to kind of fall on the general level. So again, we're certainly open to reviewing cuts, but I would say, we've kind of already done the process where we asked staff to come forward with some of those lists and we could certainly do it again and myself and staff will go through and review it. But I, I do think at this point, it comes to us as a political body to give some direction on, if we're requesting cuts, we're getting to a point of now, we're getting into specific project funding and we politically need to give some direction on what projects or what service areas are we interested in. And we don't need necessarily line items on the service areas, but we just need some direction on what specific areas or broad areas we're interested in seeing some of those things for. So we'll come back to you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the nature of this process doesn't lend itself to pick an item. I mean, I can go here on a siren replacement, general revenue, $5,000. Do we want to sit and debate that? Do we want to go then to a roundabout landscape improvement for $10,000? Do we want to talk about that and debate that? I can go through here and pick out innocuous items and we could debate each one by one or we can say that we are $700,000 over general revenue expenditures that would give the citizens relief. And we have the capital projects fund summary that I can point out and read the number exactly. 9,200,000 was budgeted, but we ended up with 11,900,000. We ended up with two mil, almost 3 million more money than we expected.
Which year was that?
Budgeted 2425, projected and result 2425.
For which item?
General, general capital project fund.
Again, I, we'll just.
Okay, let me finish.
Correct me if I'm explaining wrong, but I do think there's a lot of inflows and outflows in that account.
I got the expenditures right here. The budgeted expenditures is 13.3, we only spent 12.6. So we spent less than we expected to. I mean, this is how you look at finance in a broad way. We're not going to sit here and talk about replacing conference room chairs for $6,500 to, to people point. It's, it's a generalization here, we're talking about percentages, we're talking about generalities here. So we, you know, to Mr. Lattes' point and others, you know, next year, let me back up. Every year we've done this, we always say, "This is the maximum, this is the maximum, we can go lower, we can go lower." We need to go lower. The public has spoken, a small subset of the public is here, and I guarantee, there could be a line out the door of people that would say the same thing. If they had, you know, this gentleman and his wife were here for the first time ever, that tells me something, that people are coming here and they're concerned, that they've never been to a council meeting and they show up. That says something. So again, I'd like to see staff willing to make cuts, not cuts, change the funding, maybe I could change my motion if I may, or need to, but instead of general revenue that will drive up the millage rate for property taxes, to fund it through capital projects as an easy source to pay for things.
No, I don't think we need to amend, I think generally, the direction from the.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Additional discussion from council on the motion to look at the $700,000 reductions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think, just a comment on the general applicability of a nebulous target. I think there are some line items in the CIP that are actually services outside of the general fund services budget. So for example, like the last seven items on there are for police gear and for, you know, public works, you know, a UV bulb that needs to be replaced so that we can keep permitting to treat our waste. I'm certain our citizens want us to keep their toilets flowing. So there are some things in there that we just don't want to meddle with, if you will. And so to, to Councilmember Lattes' point, I, I don't think that we have the expertise on every single item to say, "We can cut this or that," but our staff do and we'd like to task them with that as a trusted asset to say, "Hey, here's what we can get by with this year and here's where we can get that from." I don't know for sure whether this would pass to say, "Yeah, let's get us that extra 700 in expenditures," but we've got to try, given the shifting experience of the time. So I don't disagree that we're all in a tight spot. Figure we can see if we get this direction for staff or we move on at the 1220 rate. We'll see.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, that was my intent too with the vote is, I'm not sure which thing I want to give up in the, in a buzzet, budget on the bulb that we saw, it's critical to our water treatment, but, you know, I trust that Chase knows something and, and Ron and, and Brian, they all have some insight on, hey, you know, if we got to lose another 1% out of this, 280,000, here's maybe an idea. So, but to, to the point of, of us getting here each year is difficult because, no offense, Darryl, but you bring us here every year and I, God bless you, because we go, that's why, why we had, we attempt to do this in goal setting, we attempted to, to do it in budget. Danny did a fine job of getting us to 1220. But to Kelly's comment too, it's been a wild run here since the last week or so and, you know, do you ride it out or, and, you know, maybe in a week from now, we could be living in a different world and, and we could hope that. But that would, that'd be my intent with, okay, Ron or Chase or, or someone is there an area that you could say, "You know what, we looked at this in goal setting, it's really not a good time anyway for this and maybe we can either move funds or, or cut that." So, but it is a difficult discussion when you're, I'm retired, I'm on a fixed income too and I am, would love to have, have my tax bill be a lot less than, than what it is. So I'm fighting as hard as, as the rest to try to keep this in a manageable area. So that's where I am.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, I understand the premise, I, I understand wanting to go through and, and look at things, but I guess, this is where I'm kind of thrown off by it. Our staff, we've done, they've done that. We've had times during the goal-setting process, there was a whole list of things that was, you know, staff had combed through because they, they know that we're in lean times. We, we were all fighting, not fighting each other, but fighting to make sure we were keeping up with, first of all, the obligations we have to staff as far as the pay and what we've already, what we're already under contract for, you know, the benefits that go to staff, all the things that, I guess, that's where I'm frustrated, is to think that we haven't already gone through with a fine-tooth comb, because I believe we have. And I believe every year, there's a list of things that staff doesn't, that they're like, "You know what, we, we can do without this this year." I think, you know, and that's by department and I'm sure it's going down the line. I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, directors, but your staff knows what is needed and what is not and they know where we're at financially. I believe that we've already done those things. And so I guess with this motion, I'm in agreement that it's not the time for just a broad swipe. We are also, and I, I know that we could do a special meeting and things like that, but Jen, if, if for some reason, we got thrown off in this process, what would that look like? Well, first of all, like tonight, if we would not finish this discussion, we can't set our hearing next time or later tonight, so we'd have to have another night to do that, republish, all that stuff.
that, republish, all that stuff. But one of the things I just wanted, before maybe a vote is taken on this, I just want to remind the council, if you look at the CIP, it shows general revenue in FY twenty-six of little over one million. But remember, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand of that has already been taken out. Five hundred thousand for the Hearst, that at our work session on the beginning of March, we took out, so we're not doing that. We also took the school, the high school pool funding of two hundred and twenty-five thousand that was listed as general revenue and moved that to economic development. So, I just want to point out that if it's about seven hundred thousand of GR, moving capital projects, I just want to point out, there's not seven hundred thousand of GR still in FY twenty-six. I'm not saying we can't look at other funding sources. I did just want to point that out, that there isn't enough of that, of general revenue, to move to capital projects.
Thank you, Jen.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, I'm done. I just, I just, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not saying it's, you know, I agree with your thoughts in theory, but I also believe at this point, that ask has already been done. And, that's it.
Aaron, I'll come back with you.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I couldn't agree more. I mean, I think we even talked about it when you presented the budgets and got us down to twelve twenty, that, for example, there's no, we're not opening any new positions or anything like that, we're maintaining the staff at the city at its current levels, which is also, as I understand it, very skinny compared to other cities or comparable size. All of those efforts have been done, and that's why, you know, I didn't, I'm not asking you, Mr. Cruz, to put together the budget yourself. The staff has presented it. We've gone through this over a couple months now. It's been dwindled down. I think the look at what needs to be, what is needed has already been done by the staff. So then, I think it's then incumbent upon us that if we're saying there are further cuts to be made, those are value decisions that the elected officials need to make, because we're the ones that are elected as a body to determine the values of the city and where we put our money, where we put our capital improvements and that sort of thing. And so, it's unfair to me, at this point in time, to put that responsibility on the staff, because I think they've done what they've can, what they could do to give us the most responsible budget they could, given the headwinds we're facing.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to clarify something, just like I did earlier, services versus projects. We're not cutting services, we're not making cuts. We're paying for things in the CIP differently. We're using money that's accumulated in the capital project fund from what was budgeted and what ended up there. So we're not cutting out the water treatment bulb for the water treatment plant. We're paying for it out of a different bucket of money. The bucket of money that I see, in my experience of adding up numbers and reading budgets, we gained three million, three million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. I think I'd like to see staff saying, "Let's pay for the water treatment bulb out of the capital project," instead of, it's not a cut. People say cuts. We're not cutting services, we're not cutting anything. We're just paying for it differently. To another point, body cameras, one hundred and forty thousand. That's an item. That's not a service, that's an item. Pay for that out of capital projects. It's not a cut. We're not cutting the body cams, any, the siren I mentioned earlier. We're paying for it differently. We have surplus money. And I've pointed it out numerous times now.
Well, I think the only thing, just to what Jim was saying, I think after we removed the Hearst funding and the pool funding, there's only, I think...
It's only going to be about three or four hundred thousand left in general.
So there wouldn't be seven hundred thousand dollars of general revenue items to even pay for? So we would have to probably find other sources beyond what's in the CIP.
Well, you jump from general to the nitty-gritty, which is fine, but the whole budgeting process that we start in November and December, we got a list of projects, and, you know, here we got two hundred and fourteen items, seventy-four million dollars. We don't know what we're going to end up with in March for a millage rate. So, to the points that other council said, "We've already hashed through this," well, we didn't hash through it to know the final number. We throw our wish list, the city has items that they really need and really want, but figure out a different way to pay for it, whether it be capital projects, what have you. There's a way to help the citizens that are concerned to save them tax dollars in a general way. Now, I understand that it's got to be specifics to Mr. Hawbaker, you know, "Let's debate the conference room chair replacement." Is that okay, Mr. Hawbaker? I'm sorry, I'm being facetious.
If that's your first recommendation, we'll start there.
And I would say, too, if you did vote to pass it, I'd probably...
We're all frustrated, we're all frustrated with this, but the public's even frustrated more, because they don't partake in the budget process. They can listen to recordings of it. Nobody's ever going to do that. I think of one person that has, but...
Well, so they can also attend. They're in person, they're open to the person.
They can attend, yeah. But the process is backwards, in my mind. And it takes a long time to explain that to the public, but, anyway, I rest my case. We need cuts to help the citizens.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further conversation from council on the motion to have staff do the seven hundred thousand, review seven hundred thousand dollars worth of potential reductions? All right, so, and look for different ways to fund them.
Not cuts.
So, motion seconded, and...
If I may, I just want to double-check point of order. Attorney Rogers, can you verify this is all legitimate proceeding in this special meeting?
It's the public hearing on the budget number, so if council wants to handle different numbers, certainly within your power to do so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks for checking. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion does not carry, so we go back to the original motion to look at bringing back the, or bringing to the, at the meeting tonight, the proposal to move forward with having staff set the public hearing for the final budget amount at the twelve twenty rate at the April twenty-third meeting? Twenty-first, twenty-first meeting. So any other further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, will the public get a chance to speak about changes or reductions at that meeting, or is this the venue that they should have been doing so?
I believe, yeah, we'll still have another public hearing then for the setting the actual final amount, approving the final amount.
And I would say, what good's that going to do for them?
And again, I would say, we've had multiple steps in this, and that's the best we can do, is give multiple chances for input.
Okay.
Because we did add that additional step this year of the work session.
Well, I would, people watching this, I'd like to see you next time we talk about this, stand in line and speak.
Yeah.
Let's hear it.
And, Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. Did we have an official motion earlier, Madam Clerk?
It was a public hearing.
True, we did not actually open the motion.
Still moved?
Second.
Just to clarify quick, the motion then is to move forward with bringing the public hearing at the next meeting for the twelve twenty rate on the April twenty-first council meeting. Thank you, Counselor. Motion seconded, and any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, for the input and conversation. Again, just to recap what we just said, the final meeting will be on April twenty-first, similar format, another public hearing to review what we would then approve as the final rate descended to state for the states or our annual budget. So, we will...
Mayor, I was going to bring up, I know we're supposed to have the committee, the whole meeting on the refuse rate study. I realize what time it is right now, so I think council, I don't know, Kevin, would it be they could open up the committee meeting, they could then decide to table it till the next time? I just, or council can, and have the council meeting start late. I just know there's a lot in that refuse rate presentation that Lisa and Brian prepared, so up to you guys, but I just want to mention that.
Okay, so if we can, we'll adjourn this meeting, and I'll quickly ask if everyone's comfortable, if we just go ahead and bring the next meeting on, and then we'll go ahead and probably table that till, for the time.
Yeah. I guess, looking at the regular council meeting agenda, it's not controversial, it may not last that long. We would have time for the committee meeting, in my mind.
I think we'll probably need a full...
It's a long presentation. I would rather have the full time. Okay.
Okay, thanks for checking, though. All right, so again, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Seeing all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, everyone.